Excuse me, everyone. We're having technical difficulties. This is going to be a few more minutes. We're having an issue getting on the YouTube channel.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Hi, Diedrich. It's Donna. I don't know if you could livestream this for us on YouTube. We are not able to this evening. You already are? Okay, thank you. And if we need to pay our fee, then of course we will. All right, okay. Thanks so much. Okay, bye. Diedrich's already, she posted it. And Diedrich is streaming it.
Good evening, everyone. I think we've got that technical difficulty figured out. Welcome to the council meeting of August 6, 2024. Anyone here who needs amplified headphones, please raise your hand and we'll bring those to you. Wow, what a nice turnout tonight. Thanks, everybody, for coming. It's nice to see everybody engaged in civics. So let's all rise for the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands in command, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and eternal. Donna, do you need to roll call, please?
Yes, I will. Councilmember Blush.
Here.
Councilmember Sterns. Councilmember Gilmore.
Here.
Mayor Nesko.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Sapp.
Here.
And Councilmember Gutierrez.
Here.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Does the council have any late changes to the agenda? City manager?
No, it's the town chairman.
Does the council have any board reports to share?
I have three board reports.
All right.
First board report is from the Mason County Board of Health. August is Breastfeeding Awareness Month, highlighting the positive health and social benefits of breastfeeding your child. Secondly, there will be a special meeting of the Mason County Board of Health on August 11th at 11:00 AM regarding code enforcement within the city and the county and how they compare. Secondly, the Shelton Metropolitan Parks District reported that they're happy at a Blue Zone rant that they got Catalyst Park for Master Gardeners and that they are super happy of including that improvement and making it part of the park system. Lastly, the Shelton Memorial Parks District did a computer and satellite inventory of every lot that they've had since 1890. They're up to date and they're ready for your business.
All right, thank you. Any other board reports? All right, moving on. Are we ready for reading the consent agenda? Donna, will you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, I will. Vouchers numbered 111157 through 111213 and EFT payment numbers 498 through 520 in the total amount of $389,912.64. Vouchers numbered 111226 through 111257 and EFT payment numbers 521 through 541 in the total amount of $226,166.12. Vouchers numbered 111258 through 111285 EFT payment numbers 542 through 553 in the total amount of $138,939.2 and bank drafts 00110379, DFT 0001624 through DFT 0001722 in the total amount of $1,486,514.59. Payroll warrants numbered 3988 through 3990 and 12835 through 12939. Warrants 111130 through 111149 in the amount of $529,12.10. Payroll warrants numbered 3991 and 12940 through 13038. Warrants 111214 through 111225 in the amount of $389,968.13. We also have resolution number 1341-0724, a resolution of the Council of the City of Shelton, Washington, authorizing the city manager to accept grant funds in the amount of $650,000 for proposed improvements to the intersection of Wallace-Neyland Boulevard and Shelton Springs Road. And we have minutes from the study session of June 25, 2024, business meeting of July 2, 2024, and study session of July 9, 2024.
Thank you, Donna.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Read.
Mr. Mayor, move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed, that motion carries. All right, at this time, it's general public comment. The council invites the public to make comments on matters of city business. Comments shall be made to the entire council and not individual councilmembers. Please refrain from any personal or disrespectful remarks that create disruptions of the meeting. If disruptive conduct continues, you'll be asked to leave the meeting. Donna, anyone sent up a general public comment?
Yes, we do. Mr. Mayor. Our first speaker is Jackie Jewitt.
Good evening, Jackie Jewitt, Shelton, Washington. So recently, I've been visiting the Shelton website, just taking a look at what's up to date, what isn't up to date, just kind of revisiting the mission, the vision, the ordinances, just things like that, just for my own personal, I don't know, information. So the mission statement for the city of Shelton is, "The city of Shelton strives to build a strong community and quality of life." And I definitely think that that does happen, you know? I mean, we have a lot of things going on here in Shelton that I really do like, all the events that we have and things like that. I think it's awesome. I think the city does an awesome job. Vision, Shelton is a community of active lifestyles, accountable government, engaged citizens, safe streets, strong work ethics, excuse me, and inspiring leaders. There's some words in here that I don't really think is happening right now, like "safe street." I, we've been doing a lot of canvassing and talking to a lot of people and a lot of people have been, you know, accosted or approached and people are carrying mace and people are walking in doubles to their cars after work at night. To me, that isn't safe. So moving on to the section where it says that talks about community safety on the website. And the first bullet is the focus on code enforcement activities. And so I did click on that to see exactly what the code enforcement activities entail, like exactly what we're focusing on here in Shelton. Community safety also, it says encourage pride in local neighborhoods. It says ensure public safety, services are funded and staffed appropriately, manage full lifecycle and community assets, ensure building codes and et cetera. So under "engage community," the website states, "Ensure implementation of community engagement plans." So engage local partners in planning efforts and encourage feedback. Actively promote Shelton's unique opportunities and sites. Invest in technology that enables timely and high-quality services. And proactively communicate the why and why with internal and external communication stakeholders. So I want to talk a little bit, just a couple seconds, about code enforcement. So code enforcement says, "Our code enforcement division works with residents and property owners to maintain and improve property aesthetics, property values, and community appearance." Me personally, I don't think that this is happening in my situation. It also says code enforcement officers partner with city departments, right? And some of the issues that they really look at is dangerous structures, accumulation of litter and debris, which we see a lot of, used, damaged, or discarded lumber, furniture, and junk that are in public view, detrimental maintenance of property, including tall grass. So detrimental, that word detrimental meant a lot to me. And the synonyms mean adverse, destructive, disturbing, harmful, those kinds of things that I see going on.
Thank you. Well, nothing's working tonight. Just one moment, Mr. Mayor. There. Next is Dean Jewitt.
Dean Jewitt, lifelong Mason County member. Again, I'm going to hit on ordinances and amendments, laws. The First Amendment is what? Freedom of speech. And anybody that impairs or obstructs somebody's First Amendment rights, that's not right. So just want to make sure that we get that out there. We pass ordinances and laws to make sure that we don't have mayhem and chaos. It's irrelevant as far as whether the people have feelings about those or their social, economic status, or whether they're housed or unhoused. Doesn't matter, okay? The laws and ordinances are there for a reason. Doesn't matter if it's Wednesday and it's 90, or it's Sunday and it's raining. They are what they are and they need to be enforced unilaterally. I want to touch base on the art walk that we had with Coda. I'm 50/50 on that, but the thing that I find a little bit perplexing and ironic is that that came around so fast. I mean, we talked about it, bang, it's done, painting's happening, bang, bang, bang. But we have a Supreme Court decision and we have ordinances about street camping that linger on for years and years and months and nobody does anything about it. So I guess it's kind of ironic how if it's a positive thing like that, bang, it gets pushed right through. But if it's a negative thing, it gets sit there and it gets dragged through the mud. I'd heard that the city was waiting to not be the first municipality to take any action on the Supreme Court. So they're not. I gave and I shared information about the city of Lakewood. So they're the first ones. So there's no reason that we can't pick up Lakewood, look what they're doing, do some research on it. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. You can pick and choose and they've already obviously had that. Another one is a shopping cart ordinance. You guys all had a shopping cart study session. And a lot of the stuff that I heard in there is that's just passing ordinance. People are going to have to comply with it. Well, we all know how that feels. We look at our other ordinances. But we already have an ordinance that's been there, it stood the test, it's been challenged, and it stands up. We can adopt that word for work. You know, I wanted to talk about, you know, there's obviously not enough time in three minutes. But, you know, 8.24.050, littering prohibited. You know, it talks about all the littering and stuff that happens. Well, I don't see that being forged in Brewer Park. Offensive designated, 9.16.010. A person is guilty of pedestrian interference if in a public place he or she has intentionally obstructs a pedestrian or vehicle in traffic. For the last 72 hours, there's been a section of the sidewalk across from Green Diamond that's been completely blocked. And that's also against ADA.
Thank you, Dean.
This is one of those candidates. Next, we have Kathy McDowell.
Good evening, Kathy McDowell, Shelton resident. Good evening, Mayor and Deputy Mayor and councils. I, I just want to put a thumbs up, high thumbs up, on our public works. They, I feel they don't get enough credit and enough thank yous from us on the work they do. Sunday night, it's getting close to dark time. I looked out my window and there was some water on the ground across the street and I didn't think anything of it. Pretty soon, here comes three huge trucks, vector trucks, two repair trucks. Five, six guys hopped out. A pipe had broken under from the street to a house. And they were there on Sunday night fixing that. And they were there until dark. So I just really want to say a big thank you for our public works department. That leads us to the water rates. One reason we have water rates because we have broken old pipes in our ground that need to be repaired and replaced. Can't do that without bringing in some rates, upping the rates for the water department. That's one reason why we increase rates. That brings me to the town hall meeting that we should be having for people to come and talk about whatever they want to talk about, bring forward ideas, just talk about projects, parks, new projects in town. So a town hall meeting, I think, is very important. And I hope that you'll put your heads together and get one plan for maybe in the fall that we can all get together and talk things out and have new ideas and old ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Our next speaker is Susan Kurchoff.
Good evening. Hi, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Susan Kurchoff. I'm the founder and executive director of the Youth Connection, working with young people 12 to 24 years old. I just wanted to kind of give you a little update. First of all, I love the art walk. I thought it was a great thing. I was kind of shocked how fast it got done. That was a good point. Since the beginning of this year, we've enrolled 78 unsheltered human individuals who lived on the street or lived in a tent or lived in their car. Of those 78, 65% of them report to be system of care individuals. These aren't just me making them up. It's statistics I collect when we do this work. The majority of them have been in foster care. They have mental health issues. They have juvenile justice issues. A lot of them come with drug addictions. And guess what? I can't find places for them to go. That's a downfall. We have places, but we can't get them in. So our unhoused human individuals who we want to work with, who come to us for help, we can't find help for. In, just as a kind of a quick little idea, in July of this last year, 2024, we had 909 bodies walk through our door in the month of July. And that was up from 374 in 2023. So what we are doing is working. We are connecting. We are making a difference. Providing intensive case management and supportive services allowed us to house 15 young people since the beginning of the year. I understand that people say that downtown's scary. I walk downtown every day by myself. I don't get scared. I meet people. I say hi to them. They say hi back to me. They are unhoused. They are housed. I don't really look at it that way. I just say hello to them. I'm concerned that we, as an organ, as a community, are being divided by something that we shouldn't be divided by. We should be coming together and trying to come up with a solution. And it's not jailing them. It's not fining them. It's finding a way to get them housed. They have to get housed. And I'm going to leave you with something gross because sometimes I learn side things and I go, hmm, I need to share that. So, and I don't mean that badly. I mean, it's the way it is. As we're moving into our heat and we are hitting above 100 degrees, I'm thankful we live in a community that we don't hit over 100 degrees. Did you know flesh, meat starts to cook at 105? So our unhoused humans who are out in the heat with no reprieve are starting to cook if our temperatures are over 105. So we need to think of that when we're complaining and we're making issues about our unhoused people. How do we get them housed? How do we, as a community, work together to change it? Thanks.
Our next speaker is Kathleen Blanchett.
Good evening. Thank you for being here. My name is Kathleen Blanchett. I go live and work in the city of Shelton. I love living here and I love working here. A little bit about my background. I have worked in homeless organizations, the Seattle New Gospel Mission for five years, the Illinois New Gospel Mission for three and a half. I am currently a funeral director and I work downtown with 313 West Railroad. I understand this is a complicated issue and I believe we can come together as a community to work on this. It is getting worse from when I moved here, I've been here seven years. And again, live, live just three minutes from where I work downtown. I have installed outdoor cameras at my business at the advice of the police. I have also put in extra lighting. But I still have human feces, both front and back, at different times in the, in the Milton planters out front. There has been soiled men's underwear. There have been used female products. I have had my windows broken. I have never ruined anybody who walks in and needs to use the bathroom, if they want to have a cup of coffee or water. I am fine with that. I have stopped about two years ago parking in the back because I do not feel safe getting in and out of my car when I come to work and when I leave. There's a lot of traffic back there, foot traffic in the alley. I've been accosted a few times. Again, always polite, never, never screaming and yelling at anybody, but it can be very uncomfortable. My personal favorite, I came to work one day on a Monday and somebody had lit a fire right in front of my door. It was little makings of a fire. Off in one of the planters, there was kindling for more. Thankfully, they didn't like that next to the building. All of it was on film. I sent it to the police. I have no idea what happened. But I believe we do need to get together and talk and work this issue together. There's all kinds of different experiences we have. But we need to protect people who need to be protected. We need to help people who need to be helped. And we need to hold accountable people who need to be held accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Our next speaker is Neil E. Sherman.
Neil Sherman.
Okay, next is someone named Jasmine.
For some, life is not so grandly simple. Filled with happiness and whatnots, even sheltered kids are exposed to neglect and abuse. Children are raised individually and divided. These children of the past, present, and future need help now, not when we get the funding or next time. We need help now, today. Some of these people are sitting next to you or around you. We are the people you are driving by. We are the people you see walking on the sidewalk. Some babies are born with addiction. Literally, it's in the DNA, studied and proven. Some babies are born into abusive households while other children are forced out of the place they know by 18, sometimes sooner than that would be. So the kids who finally had enough, they ended up walking outdoor into the streets, not knowing what to expect. I figured they've been through worse. As for the student, as for the students, they may not be students who no longer do not drink hard enough, always kicking off, not being focused, suffer bad, does nothing, etc., per se, or always late at disright, no matter. One of the few common answers to walk away from because of either humiliation for one, for two, to avoid both conversations in this situation, to prevent further problems, or all of the above, you choose. Forced to navigate on our own from home to school to the streets, work to survive if there is any fight left. Imagine being a child without having a childhood. How does this sound? How would any of these situations make you feel if this was you in your childhood? Would you feel indifferent if your childhood was robbed from you because you have been desensitized and led to believe this was is a normal life for anyone? How can any of this be possible without the help of the local community and its professionals, as well as the organizations that serve the lower classes and any one else who reaches out for helping, understanding, touching, guiding hands in parts alike without hypocritical judgment or racism to one's face sore, behind her back sore, without being lied to and manipulated? I'll leave you to one more food for thought. Do you feel accomplishment has been dealt? Are you proud of the situation we are in? What are the real solutions to the burdens that ill us all? Also, yes, quit hurting and damaging the youth of the nation also with fluctuation costs on uprising. What would society look like if housing was free and both states were abolished? This equates to less homelessness and more money in our savings. We could actually build livable treehouses instead of shutting down the very planet that gives us oxygen. We, the people, could be using our trees as housing, home, stability, as well, alive, well, and functioning instead of cutting trees for lumber just not wanting to be used to build homes, but pawn for money, which also costs money to make, though more wise to do economic, criminal trades.
Our next speaker is Kate.
Kate?
Left.
Jamie Ellerton.
I'm supposed to say hi, George, on the microphone. Anyways, my name is Jamie Ellerton and I am a business owner here in Mason County, right downtown Shelton on Second Street next to Youth Connection. My primary role is substance use disorder treatment and my target population is our houseless population. I just want to start by saying I will not discredit anybody's experiences if you have been accosted by somebody who is houseless. But I will say, that has never been my experience. I work sometimes until 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning by myself on Second Street. And I have never had somebody lock me into my car and I park in the alley. With that being said, I also want to agree, and most of our houseless would agree too. There is a problem in Shelton. We see it. But if there's a problem with garbage, where's the garbage coming from, a lot of it? A lot of it comes out of business owners' garbage cans that refuse to lock those garbage cans. Why can't people lock their garbage cans? We do. And I work with homeless every single day. And I also want to say that, you know, out of all the citizens in Mason County, I would be a lot more scared of who your neighbors are, who the housed people are. And we, you know, we have our houseless and they, I get it, Brewer Park, that's not a good place for people to be. It doesn't look appealing. But when people are out in camps and then they get moved from camps and then they get moved into the city and then they get moved to the city, back out into the county, and it's back and forth. I'm not justifying behaviors, but statistically speaking, why do houseless individuals congregate together? For safety. And then we go out and we remove them out of one location, put them in another location, then tell them you can't be at Brewer Park, then tell them you guys need to go find somewhere else out in the dark. Do you know the number one sex traffic population? It's homeless. Go walk around and talk to our houseless individuals for a while. Ask where they came from. Ask a little piece of their story. I bet you'll change your mind. And then you'll start looking at your neighbors differently, all the people you're working with differently. Because I get a here every single day. You know, I think part of the solution, in my opinion, there's lots of things. We've gone down lots of rabbit holes. Like what do we do with, you know, the four or five elderly folk that walk around downtown Shelton? five elderly folk that walk around downtown Shelton? I'm really savvy at resources and I can't get them off the streets. So if anybody has solutions, I am definitely all ears. I think for safety-wise, we do recognize, you know, there's issues that are out there. I don't see our houseless being the biggest safety threat, as in violent, towards me. But I do believe that our city needs a public safety committee. I think it needs to be composed of law enforcement. I think it needs to be composed of first responders. I think it also needs to have quite a few houseless folk on it so that we could hear and come up with solutions together as a team, not point fingers. Our houseless is frustrated, too.
Thank you, Jamie.
Now we have Colleen Carmichael on Zoom.
Good evening, Mayor Masco, Deputy Mayor Sherman, and fellow council members. I am Colleen Carmichael, Executive Director of New Horizon Communities. Arresting our homeless population is not the way to solve the crisis and asking them to another city is even more ineffective. There are several reasons why. First, it is harmful. Criminalization will further marginalize communities of color, those with mental and physical disabilities, LGBTQIA youth and adults, and people fleeing domestic violence. One example of a person who was harmed from this is Kim. She had this to say. My father physically abused me when I was fourteen, so I left and went to go live with a friend's family. The sad part about all of this is that my family couldn't help me. When I was not allowed to stay at my friend's house anymore, I had to resort to the outside, sleeping on park benches and slides at the park. Kim's words show how it can be harmful. Research shows it's also counterproductive. Arrests, fine, jail time, and criminal records make it more difficult for people who are homeless to access affordable housing, health services, and employment necessary to get out of homelessness. Kim was one of the people who got used to being swept. She had this to say. I got arrested and fined for about five months. That was how my life was, lonely and worthless. Is that really how we want people to feel? It's also expensive. Data in Charlotte, North Carolina, found that the city $2.4 million over course of a year are in a housing first program. With limited state and local budgets, elected officials should turn to humane, cost-effective policies, not ineffective measures that waste taxpayer dollars. By failing to prioritize access to affordable housing, you ignore the primary driver of homelessness, a severe shortage of housing. According to the National Low Income Housing Code, extremely low-income renters face a shortage of affordable units, resulting in only thirty-four units for every hundred households. How many people sweeping them or asking them to leave the town wastes the money of the people in the city? As elected officials, you have an obligation to manage our city in a fiscally responsible way out of respect for the people you serve. I'll leave you with what Kim had to say after getting help. I'm sixteen now, living in a shelter showed me a lot, like there are more people than just me that understand that things I have been through. There are also people for everything. I was happy now as I have been for a very long time. For the city, everyone in this city, and the people like Kim, we ask you to invest in more housing and services. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Next on Zoom, we have Dave Redman. Dave, did you want to speak? It looks like he didn't. He lowered his hand, so we have one more person here named Marie Marbet.
Hi there. I'm a kid who grew up in Shelton. I've been living here my whole life, just recently left to go to college, so that's basically my experience here. And I just came here to remind the community that the way to solve the homelessness crisis is not to alienate or otherwise police the people who are just trying to find places to live. I understand that with crises such as these, there comes a lot of violence and a lot of desperate decisions and, you know, drugs cause problems for people. But the way we're going to solve this is not by just simply kicking people out. That doesn't exist. There's no out for people to go. People just go to the cities and then they come back here and then, you know, there's just more displacement. And so I would agree that with a lot of the people that spoke here today, that there needs to be more investment in trying to find housing for people. But the solution is not to alienate this population because, I mean, they live here not to. That's just the way that it is, so, I mean, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Marie.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else like to sign up and comment? All right. Moving on. Our next item is the LTAC report from the Chamber of Commerce, Deidre Peterson.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Deidre Peterson. I'm President and CEO of Shelton Mason County Chamber. I'm here to give a very brief report on our first quarter of lodging tax activities. For those who are not familiar, lodging tax is collected from hotels in city limits. That money is deposited into account to the city stewards and on an annual basis decides how to support activities to encourage tourism. So the contract that we have is for visitor information services, and this will talk just a little bit about first quarter, not only our work within city limits, but also within Mason County. So, look at the next slide, please. You can see here, looking at January through March, the numbers of maps and passes that have been sold, as well as the visitors that we received. We did see quite a dramatic decrease in Q1, which we did not see in the second and third quarters, which was largely due to the really severe weather that we had, which impacted travel and also a lot of the destinations that folks were going to. What's interesting and not reflected here is that we did see quite a large increase in the number of folks who were emailing for information and for later dates, were accessing us through social media. Our phone calls were down from last year, but still twice what they were two years ago. And our visitor information center in town, we have two. One is the caboose itself in front of the post office and the other is the chamber office. We also have the Hoodsport Visitor Center at the entrance to staircase at the Olympic National Park. And you can see our hours listed there and, of course, you can find those on Google. So, next slide. Within our contract, we want to make sure that you're aware of the types of visitors that are coming through. For the Shelton Caboose Visitor Information Center, we obviously have a lot of regional folks visiting and stopping in. We also had out-of-state visitors from Wyoming, Arkansas, Illinois, Texas, and California, and even folks from out of country. In Q1, that was from Vancouver and three families from Germany. Some folks said they came to the caboose specifically because it was the train and the logging icon of our area. Others were simply looking for those blue signs and looking for visitor information. Next slide. The Hood Canal Visitor Center, as you can see there, laden in the snow, also sees quite a range of folks and our out-of-state there was from Texas, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Utah, and Oregon. And we had British Columbia, Hawaii, and Switzerland, which Hawaii, I'm not sure belongs overseas, but that's all right. The Hood Canal Visitor Center is by far our most popular, but what we find is that a lot of times folks are stopping in Shelton to plan their way up through the peninsula. And so stopping here gives us an opportunity to direct them to local restaurants and services, encourage them to take a historic tour, or visit with some of our local services. Next. We manage several Facebook pages and you can see that our reach was up about forty-three percent for Q1. Typically, our Mason Chamber page is focused on promoting local business and things to do, while the Hoodsport Visitor Center page is largely utilized to advise the public about travel restrictions, things they need to know while traveling. We also have a very deep partnership with the Olympic National Park and U.S. Forest Service, which allows us not only access to maps and tasks you can only get through those partnerships, but also gives us really insightful, incredible information about the park itself, the travel conditions. As you know, staircase has become a really difficult traveling area and what that looks like for the camper. And so we have the absolute most up-to-date information to share with visitors. And oftentimes, we'll give visitors who call or email with a very specific, very particular question, and we're able to reach out to the rangers and other staff to make sure we come up with the information that they need. Next slide. You can see here on the Google landing page, the reviews that we have are consistently very positive. The caboose has a 4.6 star rating. You can see what folks are finding out typically because they're looking for the chamber. Typically, trains in that top search as well. And again, this is just for Q2. On the second page, I am really looking down. You can see there for Hoodsport. And again, folks are looking for attractions, visitor center, caboose, businesses. And so that's where people are coming to us from. That is another 4.5 star rating, and we're really proud of the work we do to respond to visitors on those sites as well. One thing that was not in Q1, but I think is worth mentioning since we do have such a good crowd here tonight, is that we had an incredible group of volunteers that in the second quarter really banded together to give some much needed love to not only the caboose, which the chamber owns, but also to the Tolly, which the city owns. And the city came in as a partner in that program. We had amazing folks who were experts in carpeting, dentists, welding, and homeschool students and business owners who supported that activity. And so you'll hear more about that in my second quarter report, but just a very grateful shout-out from the chamber to everyone who was part of refreshing that part of our main street and that welcome to visitors who are coming to our area. Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions for Deidre? Thank you, Deidre.
Thank you so much.
The first item of business agenda pertains to post-clean-up monitoring of the C Street landfill. Superintendent Brent Armstrong has details. There he is.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Bringing forward aspect consulting contract amendment number three for the C Street landfill post-clean-up monitoring. I have a slide just to familiarize with the projects of the new council members. We were under a mandate by the Department of Ecology to clean up our old C Street dump that goes across C Street, overpass, is located in the darker ground area, just north of mild sandy gravel. These are just project slides. So the landfill closure area didn't encompass the whole parcel, but just the area outlined and that did go onto the adjacent property. We had to remove the waste in that, relocate it in the landfill area, and then cap it with soils used from the onsite borrow areas. This is just some pictures of start to finish of the construction sequences. As you can see, there was room field construction out there doing a lot of moving of dirt, relocating of solid waste on the capped area, but the end of, the end product turned out to be a pretty good-looking site that is a fenced-in area. And there we have, and there we have the, no, just one. The evaluation for the first-year monitoring that was done with the lowering of the cap. They had to shoot elevations and see how much it settled. It didn't settle very much, which is, some settling is to be anticipated, but because of the soils on top are not compacted all the way, so in it'll settle over time and then you wait up the waste compiled there. So that's just kind of a background on what was done there. Any questions on that portion? So the contract amendment is going to use forty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty cents remaining of the current budgeted money, with an addition of a hundred and forty-seven, two hundred and nineteen dollars and fifteen cents of new funds coming from the solid waste fund to do the continued monitoring for years two through five. And that is just going to use monies accumulated in the solid waste fund.
All right. We have a motion.
Mr. Mayor, please place resolution number 1342-0724 on August 20th, 2024. Council meeting action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right. Commerce your questions. Thank you, Brent, for your presentation and finally getting this thing all wrapped up.
One thing, Brent, how many yards or how many tons of solid waste were moved? Do you remember off the top of your head?
Oh, it was in hundreds of thousands.
Yeah, hundreds of thousands, sometimes forty feet deep in that area. So that was dug up, removed. This is a legacy landfill that has never closed properly for the city, so we've had to go back and make that right. With Department of Ecology, they require monitoring long-term. So a pretty significant project, a project the city hasn't taken on previously, so I want to commend Brent, the rest of the staff. Brooke Kiltz did a tremendous job managing the contracts and the money piece of this, and it has, in fact, received, requested and received additional funding from Department of Ecology for some of the continuing monitoring over the next year. So our staff has worked really diligently to close this landfill out and hopefully the results are, you know, are what Ecology is seeking and we can put this to bed here in the next few years.
I appreciate it. It's also been, you know, the seven years I've been here, it's been a priority of the commission that before I was in the council to get this thing started. I believe that it was the eighties, wasn't it, where the state wanted it closed and or it never got closed?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It wasn't properly closed, if you will. We were no longer using it. There's some storages, some overburdened dirt and stuff like that, culvert maybe, but so it was not really used, but it wasn't formally closed, which is a specific process that we just saw Brent demonstrate a little bit of.
And the previous commission had got a degree order with Ecology and that's where it all started about, about seven years ago, I would imagine, or eight years ago, right? And I'm glad it's closed. It's been a bit a long time coming. Was it 1928?
I don't remember. It was used by...
2015 is when they approved it.
But it's been a dump from 1920s to like the 50s.
Yeah.
But, well, thank you, Brent, and the staff for getting that all taken care of. So we have a motion and a second to place, oh, I'm sorry. Any other questions? We have a motion and a second to place resolution number 1342-0724 on the August 30th, 2024. Action agenda for consideration. I'll in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. We now have a police chief, Costad, with information about a contract with the Flock Safety System.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to talk to you about Flock. If you recall, we had a study session back on June 25th where we were able to present the Flock system to you and explain how it works and how it'd be beneficial to the citizens of this community. For a quick little recap, Flock system is an automated license plate reader system that detects and stores license plate data for thirty days. Why are we doing this? What are we detecting? We're detecting stolen cars, bonded cars by other agencies, probably involved in some other type of crime, Amber alerts that are associated with vehicles, and also missing persons that are associated with vehicles. How these cameras work, essentially, they're put in certain areas throughout the city. A vehicle passes it, the system will register that plate, store it. If there's a want associated with that vehicle, my units are alerted in their in-car computers to the location, what the vehicle's wanted for, description, and then they can head towards that direction and start trying to look for the car. When we first went to Flock to submit this idea to them and get their opinions on camera locations, they identified twelve locations throughout the city that'd be beneficial. These are all the major arteries into the city that include railroad, Brockdale, John Prairie, Highway Three, Quallum, Arcadia, southeast Arcadia, so just to name a few. How they would be set up is initially is they would be shot, they would set up to capture vehicles coming into the city. The reason for that is that there's a reactionary carry to these cameras. They automatically throw trackers on cars where we can locate them, so we're going to need some time, once the alert is set, that we can go and try and locate that car. We're not just waiting at the borders of the city. We're on other calls, we're on a lunch break, we're somewhere, so it's going to give us time to get to that area and start looking for this vehicle. Later on... Later on, if this system is, uh, working well for us, I anticipate that we would get other cameras that point outwards. That will help us with investigations when people are fleeing out the city and we can, we can use that information in data mining. Access to this, uh, the storage data is limited, will be limited to the PD administration and investigations. Flock does not even access that without our express permission to do so or a court order. So those are the only access that's allowed to it. Also, with this system comes a transparency portal through Flock, which we can attach a link onto our website. They can click, and we can log into the website, click on that, look on that, and it'll tell, you know, what are, what we're, what we're detecting, what we're not detecting, our policies, our prohibited uses, how many vehicles we have detected, um, what, what, what hot lists, um, how many on the hot lists we've detected, and how many searches we've done. The contract, as it's set up now, it's a two-year contract, uh, $40,000, uh, $40,800 for the first year and a subsequent annual subscription fee of $36,000. We applied for a grant from the Washington Auto Tech Prevention Authority for the initial setup of this, and they granted us $20,000, $20,400 to apply to this program. An addition, an additional annual budget, uh, will need to be increased for $36,000 will be needed for the program continuance. That's for the cameras, the software, maintenance, support, camera repair and replacement, and the storage. Also, um, attached to the packet is the Master Servants Agreement, uh, for Flock and the City of Shelton, and that one's already, already been reviewed by the City of Shelby. I'm having the answering questions.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, would you place item number, oh, the Flock Camera System on August 20th, 2024? Action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right. Commerce, your questions?
So just to clarify for our, our, our audience here, because we have so many people. So many people have asked, what does it take a picture of? Can you be very clear on what's they will see?
The cameras are centered into the middle of the road, and they're placed to, to get the rear, the back end of the vehicle license plate. That's how, we don't take pictures of people in the cars. We don't, you know, people around it, it may capture that, but that's unintentional. That's not what we're trying to get. It's just the back of the vehicle is what we get.
Thank you.
So both you and the sheriff are in approval of this? And you think it's a force multiplier for the PD and the Sheriff's Department?
Absolutely, yes. Absolute force multiplier. Not only with investigations when we're data mining for, for vehicles that may have flooded a specific area. Right now, we have to go out, knock on doors, knock on businesses, look for their camera footage. Um, we've been able to, to speed up that process by looking into our storage floor through Flock and finding out places for that. Also, when it comes to patrol, um, these systems, if I got 12 cameras out there, that's almost like worth 12 more police officers possibly. I could stage 12 police officers at each of these locations. They could run plates all day, and they don't, going to get, and, but they're not going to be efficient. They're not going to be as quick. So, you know, it's, it's absolutely force multiplier.
So it's worth $36,000?
Yeah, it's about, it's less than half of a, half the cost for a full-time police officer. I mean, yeah, absolutely.
Again, we're not looking for crimes in the process. We're looking for a crime that's happened and they've come into our city. Let's say that somebody kidnapped a child in Ocean Shores, and they were going to head down, you know, Highway 3. We would get that plate and we would,
That, that's correct.
We would know there was a kidnapping that was associated to this car, and we're going to go find it.
Yes, this is reactionary, yes.
So, yeah, and, um, also, uh, we're not taking pictures of people's faces. We're just looking at, at plates.
There, there is no biometrics included with this. There's no face recognition. There are no filters in this system that allows to search for people, vehicles, descriptions, and plates on them.
And I think in the briefing that we had last, so if there's, like, there's a bank robbery and it's a blue Camaro, we're able to search for a blue Camaro also, though?
That is correct, yes.
Got it. Right. Any, um, other questions? All right. We have a motion in a second to, to this item on, place this item on the August 20th, council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. All right. We have one more from Chief Costad.
Yes, sir. Uh, and associated, associated with Flock, uh, we're talking about now, we've worked with this project on how we're going to mount these cameras within our community. We want to use existing infrastructure, specifically our PUD poles to do so. If we have Flock do, we have to pay a lot of an extra $500 a camera. It's for them to have to put a pole up. We can use existing poles from PUD at no cost. We've already got a contract with them in motion. It's already been reviewed by the city attorney. It allows the city to utilize the PUD poles to mount the Flock cameras on poles at no cost. And the extent of PUD's participation is to provide access to the utility infrastructure and attach the Flock cameras. That's it. They're not involved in operation, maintenance, or have access to control over the content capture.
All right. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, would you place the PUD agreement on August, on the August 20th, 2024? Council meeting, action agenda for further consideration.
Second.
All right. Commerce, your questions?
I think that's ready. We had proactive and got that going.
We have a motion in a second to place this PUD agreement on the 20th, August 20th, 2024? Council meeting for further consideration. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed. That motion carries. And there are no action items tonight, so we are, City Manager, report. You have a report first.
Just a couple things, Mr. Mayor and Council. I want to thank everybody involved with the Art Walk a week ago. Certainly, it's two weeks ago now, almost a week and a half, from the volunteers, the businesses, to the artists and the involvement there. It's been quite some time since Shelton Arts Commission conducted an art walk here in downtown Shelton. I think it's great to engage our community, our artist community, and particularly activate Cota Street, which hasn't had a whole lot of activity like that in quite some time. So we really look forward to that continuing in the future. Yesterday, council member, excuse me, Mayor Nisco, Deputy Mayor Sherman, and council member Gutierrez, both myself and Finance Director Givens, kind of preliminary budget discussion as you comprise the budget subcommittee. Got some great direction from you, so we'll be compiling that information for a study session on August 27th. And that's really, as this has been a process now for a month and a half or so internally, we'll start having those external communications on how we're developing the budget. At this point, we'll take direction from the council on the 27th, whether there's another study session, or we're able to move forward to some meetings for adoption of budget in November. So that'll kind of hinge on, again, that study session on the 27th. So we look forward to bringing 2025 budget to you at that point. And then recently, we announced the acceptance of lodging tax tourism applications. So those are open through the end of August. You can find the information on the city's website. We look forward to other community events that may bring people into our, into our community and participate in some of these great events that are funded now through the LTAC fund. That's it for me.
Any questions from the City Manager? Does the Council have any new items for discussion? Nope. All right. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August 20th, 2024, 6:00 p.m. And also a study session August 13th at 6:00 p.m. This meeting is adjourned at 6:58 p.m. Thanks, everybody, for coming.
Recording stopped.